Call the meeting order and start with a pledge. Christina, could you do the roll, please?
Yes, Fish, Johnson, Cole, Lawrence, Marso, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Here. You have the agenda in front of you. Um, any additions or corrections, or I'll look for a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, approval of the minutes, we've got the May sixteen and May twenty meetings. Uh, look for a motion or any additions or corrections.
Move to approve, second.
Motion second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Approval of claims on pages fourteen through fifteen. Any additions or corrections, or I'll look for a motion?
Second.
Motion second to approve the claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consent calendar, we have, uh, some wage adjustments to police officers, public works, couple pool employees. Any discussion, or I'll look for a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Visitors and time guidance, this is an opportunity for anybody that would like to address the chamber for any issue, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. If you have something we'd like for you to step up and give your name and address. Remember it's five minutes. Sitting down, we'll move on. Public hearing. We have the, uh, Brandon Valley Chamber of Commerce funding request. Let's see, we do have somebody from the chamber, so if you'd like to step up and visit with us, that'd be good.
Good. Alright, yeah, thanks for having us, uh, my name is Chris Limer. Um, I'm this year's, uh, board chamber, um, president, uh, chamber chair. And today I'm, uh, joined by Rachel Neiman, our executive director of the chamber. We just wanted to come by again this year, I think we come by usually once a year at least, and just say, give an update on what's been going on with us, and, uh, ask for more money. Um, I think you guys give us some money every year for our expenses, as far as like our marketing expenses and things, just kinda wanted to review what those were this year, and, and what our ask is for this year, but first of all, just thank you for your partnership with us and, uh, the chamber, and I think the city, and we all work together pretty well, as far as like, you know, we're all both on the same page, as far as, you know, trying to promote the businesses that are our members, but also those same businesses are, they live in Brandon, most, a lot of them. Uh, obviously, a lot of people that live in Brandon use those businesses, and, uh, from the Brandon and Valley Springs and surrounding areas, so I think we're all on the same page of trying to make, uh, this whole community better, and, uh, that's our, our focus too. But I think in your packets too, we have, uh, submitted requests this year, uh, you, for eighty-five thousand dollars, which is up there. Um, slightly increased from last year, and last many years, it's kinda been constant at seventy-five thousand. This year, we, we bumped it up to eighty-five, just with, uh, the inflation and things that have been coming up the last several years, you know. Uh, I just wanted to go over some of the things that we do spend that money on, again, it's all for just marketing expense, there's nothing that goes towards rent or salaries or anything like that for the chamber. Um, but some of the big ticket items, I guess we have, or, you know, we, we do have a lot of social media presence and things like that, it still costs money, but we also have, you know, a lot of print things that, uh, cost money to produce, so that's part of our advertising too, is not just, marketing is not just, you know, online and things like that, we still do have a lot of things that still need to be printed and sent out to the community. So a lot of the costs is going towards those types of things, uh, like the big one is the inside Brandon. Kind of the big booklet that we produce, usually twice a year, this last year we only did it once, but just doing one of those, this last year was almost, uh, ten thousand five hundred dollars. So that's a big expense, that's not even including, you know, postage or anything like that. Um, uh, some other big expenses are some of the other ads that we put in, like the Brandon Valley Journal, South Coast Tourism, um, South Dakota Magazine, Destination Brandon, those things that get disseminated out throughout the communities, uh, surrounding community. Uh, quarterly postcards, I think, uh, Rachel put one of these on your, guys' desk there. Barb, did you get one? Okay. Um, and, uh, so those cost money, and recently, you know, Rachel and Lee Skelling, one of our other board members, and Patrick from the city, went to a meeting, uh, retail strategies meeting, uh, back in March. Kind of just, they had a whole big presentation for, you know, how we could, you know, maybe things that could benefit Brandon, both, uh, chamber-wise, city-wise, community-wise. One of the big things that came out of that was, that Rachel brought back was, you know, we need, we could, we should be expanding our area that we try to reach out to, as far as the chamber. You know, consistently, we've been doing, you know, the Brandon and Valley Springs and Eastside Sioux Falls, you know, kinda marketing to those addresses and communities. Uh, but their idea, which makes sense, is to even reach out further, uh, mostly to the east, like Larchwood, Garrettson, Hills Beaver Creek, Laverne, cause those, people in those communities, they may or may not have a chamber or something like a chamber, but, um, you know, we may be one of their first stops if they're coming to Sioux Falls or this way, if they don't have some sort of goods or service in their community that they're seeking. Um, Brandon is a pretty good first stop for them, and, you know, we get a lot of business already from those types of communities, so even promoting more, um, you know, of our businesses and our services over the whole city to them is, uh, gonna be more beneficial, but also costs more because of mailing and things like that. Brandon did the legislature, is something that's kind of a joint, joint, I guess, effort through school, city and the chamber, that I think many of you have been to, and were there this year with me as well, um, that costs the chamber about five thousand bucks, uh, as far as our part of it, per year. That's been going on for as long as I can remember, at least fifteen years, I think, that maybe more, I mean, I've been on the part of the board, part of the chamber for quite a few years, and I remember going to one a long, long time ago, and so we can, still do that, and I think it's a really good day to, you know, highlight Brandon at the legislature, and we talked to different, uh, legislators or difference, um, you know, uh, different heads of committees and things like that there, and see how business is done, and just, uh, make sure that they know we're out, still out here in Brandon and still growing. Uh, Biz Bash is the vendor fair that we do every, every summer, kinda late summer. Um, so we set up, send a lot of postcards out, and set up tents and things, and we bring a lot of business to the community, or, uh, bring them all together basically, and have a kinda like community events where people can get in front of each other, you know, businesses get in front of the residents, and and a lot of welcome boards, and different things, signage, billboards we have around town that we maintain, we even had to rebuild a couple this year that cost a little bit more. Those are about twelve thousand bucks, you know, to maintain those this year. Um, like I said, the Biz Bash was about seventy-three hundred. Uh, website marketing, it's not totally free to market on the website, you still have to pay for things, about five thousand dollars for last year for that. Uh, printing and postage, you know, a lot, a lot of those things I said, we have the print and send outs, uh, Performance Press is a business that we use in town to do a lot of that printing. Our bill to them is roughly eighteen thousand dollars. Um, and then plus postage of about, almost ten thousand dollars. So those are kind, some of the highlights, I guess, of the big ticket items, there's lots of other things that don't need to worry about, but, uh, basically, we spent eighty-five thousand dollars last year, and like I said, we only did one of those inside Brandon, we usually do two of them. I think we're on track to do do this year again, right, Rachel? And again, like I said, we're gonna be expanding kind of the marketing area that we have, um, more, more postage expense, more, more, uh, I guess, expense to create the postcards. Um, so, I guess that's our ask this year. And if you guys have any questions at all, if you could answer them. Rachel's here to help out, if I need it.
Chris, did you, did you guys have to increase your fees for the businesses as well this year, or is that something on the docket?
Uh, we've, we've kinda, not really specifically this year, I mean, we've kinda did that a couple of years ago, and I think we've kinda maintained, basically, the last couple of years, we did, there's like one, uh, one small thing, we called it like an associate member, we kinda bumped that up to like people that are just like an individual that was like a hundred bucks, and we bumped that up a little bit. But basically, our other membership costs haven't really reflected that, I think the biz, our, our side of it, where we, you know, we have enough money in the bank and things to pay for all the other stuff, and we're fine that way, so we don't feel like we have to, to, you know, raise those, because like we did, I think we did last several years. Um, and we do once in a while kinda review that, but we haven't specifically done that for a while, but I know the seventy-five thousand, I don't even think Rachel knows if it was different from before you started. The seventy-five thousand that we came from the city. I mean, it was less than that to begin with, but I think the last five years at least, it's been seventy-five thousand, so, and, I mean, that's, we did, we probably will spend more than that this year, but, than eighty-five, but we didn't wanna ask for more, because we know that a lot of different things going on with the city, as far as grocery tax and things like that, kinda unknowns, so I guess that's our ask this year. And, uh, we spent that last year, so I think it's, obviously, we're gonna spend anything next year or more. But, but we're okay to cover, you know, other expenses, if it's more than that, so it's not like we're hurting for money, but we, uh, those expenses have already been, you know, spent in the past.
Colin, I'll just add real quick, we did do some research with some of our marketing firms, and um, they shared with us, smaller businesses that have set aside a marketing budget to help their businesses grow and develop will usually set aside roughly seventy-five thousand dollars just for their one business. Um, the chamber is out there working and advocating for roughly two-hundred-and-eighty members every year, so, um, your eighty-five grand, you divide that by our two-hundred-and-eighty members, um, I don't know off the top of my head what that comes to, but we'll just say roughly two-hundred-and-sixty bucks per business is what we're, um, basically spending on advertising for each of our members, and I do truly, wholeheartedly feel like, um, we're doing that plus way more, I mean, just the month of January this year, we put in way more than that, just for our burger battle through marketing, um, efforts, so I, when you look at what we're asking for, divide that divided, or divided by two-hundred-and-eighty members, um, it's really not, I think I do feel like it's really reasonable.
So, um, Chris, one area that Rachel and I've talked about before, and I think she's, has been working on it, is that I feel really strongly that all of the subcontractors, the contractors, engineers, architects that we're paying tax dollars to need to be chamber members. Now, probably that's gonna take some guts and some phone calls, cause that's gonna be the best way to get them, but for these big guys, three hundred bucks is a drop in the bucket, more than likely, they'll keep paying it. Um, and I just think that that's a really important source of revenue, and they need to be chamber members, because they're using our tax dollars.
Yeah, we, we appreciate you saying that, and we've talked about that at our board members, our, our board meetings, because we have realized that some of those members that you've talking about have become members, at least at the, you know, three-hundred-dollar level, some maybe even more than that. Um, but yeah, it's true that, uh, you know, we do focus on anybody that's doing businesses in Brandon. You know, I think it's a, I think they can get a lot out of it too, and I think some of them that have been doing businesses in Brandon now, it's kinda like made it, uh, when they do become a member, they kinda say, okay, here's our couple of people that are assigned to kinda being more involved in the chamber, so we've actually seen that. Where it's like, sometimes this is like, okay, we pay it right the check every year, and like, forget about it until next year. But we do have, have seen some feedback where they're actually getting involved more too, so that's a good thing.
Well, I like the involvement, but I'll take the money.
Chris, I think you've done a great job, uh, I appreciate you, I appreciate all your efforts on, on behalf of the chamber. Um, you do a lot of volunteering in the community, and I, and I'm a firm believer in the chamber. This is a budget item that we will deal with when we deal with the budget. Um, but I appreciate your coming in today, and, uh, once again, I, I appreciate all you guys do, I think it's our best opportunity to help to buy brand and process, and, uh, help our sales tax revenue, so. Thanks again, and we'll have discussions about it. I've also thought a little bit over the years that maybe it wouldn't be a bad thing to set up some sort of an incentive-based, um, program, where it's a percent of our sales tax revenue. And, um, we'll talk about those things, but, uh, good job, keep it up, and, uh, appreciate what you're doing.
Alright, appreciate you guys, thank you.
And Rachel too, we gotta give her a shout out, everybody in the city knows Rachel, so we appreciate all you do, Rachel.
There's two Rachels, she's one of them, Team Rachel at the chamber, they're awesome, thanks.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on, uh, to, there's no old business, so we'll go to standing committee reports. Starting with the golf course, we have a seasonal employee to hire on page twenty-two. I'll look for motion.
So moved, second.
Motion second to, uh, hire the seasonal employees. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And motion carries. Busy day at the golf course today, I guess, is what I understand. Yeah, a lot of busy days. That's terrific. Moved to parks and rec. Saw the park, the park report on twenty-three and twenty-four, very, very busy time for the park crew. Um, doing good work, still, uh, I, I, I don't know if I shared this with you or not, but, uh, I went down for one of the ball tournaments, took my daughter along and the mule, and we counted five hundred and sixty-nine cars in the parking lot. Uh, not just in the parking lot, geez, they were everywhere. And a lot of people had left already, uh, cause a lot of people going out when we were going in, so, um, a lot of work to do there. We have, uh, a, um, request for alcohol consumption at Pioneer Park, is that? What's the story on that, I can't remember?
Uh, it's just a, it's a birthday party for two-year-old.
Birthday party, yeah.
We've authorized alcohol consumption, it's not, they're not selling or anything, it's just if they bring it.
For a family thing.
Yeah, it's a family event.
I'll look for a motion on that.
Second.
Motion second to recruit, to, uh, approve request for alcohol consumption at Pioneer Park.
If I might comment, so, um, my suggestion is on these, these generally run through park board, and I'm guessing what happened is the, the time caught up to the person that was applying, but I would like to suggest to take, take it off of our shoulders and take it off of staff's shoulders, that unless they're able to get their request in and get it to park board, that we turn them down, because I, I, your memories are a lot better than mine, but I can't remember always what our policy is as a, as a council member, and so I really think they need to go through park board. But at this point in time, we don't have that policy in place, but I think it's something that we should have in the future.
Any other discussion? We have a motion second to, uh,
Well, Mayor, I see here that it's a, a two-year-old birthday party, right? We'd like to offer beer only to adults who aren't driving. Who's, uh, I hate to volunteer our force, but who's gonna be policing that for, lack of a better term?
That'd be self-policing by the people holding the event. Unless they, unless we have a dealing with our police department, then.
Any other discussion? Motion second, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, hire summer rec employees, page twenty-six. Any discussion? Or I'll look for a motion?
I move to approve, second.
Motion second to approve the, uh, hiring of summer rec employees. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Pool employees, page twenty-seven. Any discussion?
Move to approve, second.
Motion second to approve the, uh, hiring of pool employees. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have a special event application for the baseball association tournaments. Uh, the state boys' baseball tournament, right?
Correct, it's for the, it's by an individual, it's not associated with the baseball associations, for the sunshine tournament and the state A baseball tournament to park a RV travel trailer in Aspen Park, uh, overnight, as well as, uh, allow alcohol consumption.
I believe Daven is on the phone. Are you present?
Uh, yes.
Do we have a staff recommendation?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, but you can just explain it a little more.
Sure. Uh, honey, it's a, you know, I have a, uh, baseball, NBA, and, you know, my, my, it's a request from PBA. Uh, it's a personal request. Uh, was just looking to have an option for his team and, and other eleven U, uh, baseball teams to connect and gather at a central location, typically Father's Day is a little bit warm. Uh, you know, they can cool off in the RV, uh, between games, just ultimately a central location for those teams and those boys and families to, to hang out at Aspen Park, um, in between games.
Do we have a staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation is to decline, um, one, uh, as Mayor Buck mentioned, parking down at Aspen Park during tournaments is at a premium, so taking at least one parking space out for a permanent, semi-permanent camper, and two, uh, the city's been fairly consistent, I should say, not fairly, but very consistent with not allowing alcohol consumption during youth tournaments. Uh, in the past, the council's determined it's not appropriate to encourage and/or have alcohol in the park during those tournaments.
Yeah, and, and the alcohol consumption piece was, this is the first time I filled out one of these forms, I, you know, that's not a deal breaker on this, uh, for us, so if that's something that could be removed and, and approved, uh, the ultimate goal here is a place for these kids and families to hang out, the alcohol consumption is not at all a priority in this request.
I, I guess, uh, this is Barb speaking, I guess, um, my thought is, I'm concerned about the space. Um, I hear the, the idea of having the boys hang out, but I'm thinking this is a local team, so perhaps someone could offer their home for that, um, specific purpose. My other concern is if we start and we do one, then we really can't cut it off, it's gonna be then someone else is gonna wanna do it, and we're gonna really run into some space problems, so those would be my concerns. I appreciate your being on the phone and explaining it.
Yeah. I guess, thanks for the consideration, you know, when we, before we submitted it, I talked to a few people, and it sounded like our, our C race course had done tampons similarly, um, just recently, and so, you know, we wanted to submit it for consideration. Uh, the parking wouldn't be a concern, it would be, you know, behind the fields. Um, wouldn't be taken up parking, but, um, I, ultimately, it's your, your guys' decision, so, uh, make sure to consider it.
Uh, this is Bruce, um, I, I, I agree on the parking situation, and I, I guess I don't know if we have any signs up, no RV parking, but to me, guests' teams could show up and, you know, I, I don't know how we'd ever stop that, but.
We wouldn't, but the request is for overnight. So, the park closes at eleven or soon thereafter, as the games are done, so we want the parks empty. So if there are issues down there after that closing time, the PD knows exactly what's going on.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and I, um, I listed on the form, there, there wouldn't be anybody occupying the, the RV overnight, um, no one would be camping, it's just, for sake of not having to move it in and out each day, um, the request was to, to leave it overnight with no one occupied.
So, help me understand, this is Colin, help me understand, is this, have we done this for the, do, did we do this for the overnight, for the?
We, the council authorized camping and alcohol, private alcohol consumption for the RC track for their big race event, I think in July. Um, a couple of different things, one, uh, the biggest thing is it's not a youth tournament. It's primarily adults at the RC track or the RC event.
My worry is that we just passed one for a two-year-old birthday party in a park. You know, and now we're saying, no, we can't for a bit, so I, I don't know, I feel like we're kinda holding double standards here, that maybe, like Barb said, maybe this needs to go through park board first, before ultimately comes to us, but it's hard for me to say, no, we should, we should deny Devon, we just said a two-year-old birthday party can have alcohol consumption.
Uh, the two-year-old birthday party is restricted to a private family event, fairly small in, in attendance. You've got a youth baseball tournaments going on with a number of individuals there. Uh, and we all know, at least those of us that have been active in youth sports over the last decade, um, uh, adult, uh, adult, um, behavior has gotten exceedingly worse, and I don't think that alcohol in any fashion would be an appropriate thing, cause I know I yell at the umps. Um, I can only imagine, you know, if I have a couple beers in me, what, what would happen. So that's the difference, you've got a private family event versus, uh, seven hundred and some cars.
I think he just said, while Brian was talking, just so everybody heard that, I think he's still, he said again, if alcohol, Devon, did you not say if alcohol's the issue, you're taking that off the board, right? Yes. Okay.
Yeah, my only comment, I guess, would be, uh, as he stated earlier, he wouldn't be in the parking lot, he would be back behind the fields, we don't allow, uh, vehicles back there during tournaments or anything, or, or anytime, actually, we have a gate. The gate unfortunately is open all the time now due to the construction, but RVs, things like that are not allowed behind the fields anyway, that's where all the kids are running around and walking around, stuff like that, so they would have to stay in the designated parking area.
I, I would make a motion to, um, leave things as they are and not allow this to happen.
We have a motion second to deny the request, any, any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm gonna vote the other way, I, I just feel like we're we are, um, kinda double standard here a little bit, and there, and, yeah, some of this may be a single standard, but I just feel like, um, you know, seems like somewhat a reasonable que, request of what everybody else is doing, now, I, I'm totally, I mean, I think we all know, I see, I'm at the fields all the time with my kids, that we know there's alcohol consumption going on there, whether we like it or not, but, you know, again, there, he's, Devon's coming with a request, request for it. Um, but I guess, yeah, my only hesitation, hesitation on this is that I feel like we've already done it for the RC, RC people, why are we not allowing it for the park?
This, this is a request to have a camper overnight. Who have we done that with?
The RV people, the RC, the RC.
They're gonna have a camper overnight?
Yes, we just did it, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, yeah.
We did.
Yeah.
We did. Is there anything?
Any other discussion?
Devon or Ja, yeah, Devon or Jamie, if they drove the RV in that day, we have to allow them to park, right, as long as there's space?
Yeah, we don't have any restrictions on what vehicles are in and out of the park, they just can't spend the night.
So it's not saving, so, I mean, if he decides to do that, if, if this is denied, and he decides to do that, that ba, that RV is likely to be parked there anyway during the day, right? So then, so then all we're arguing about is he's already taken alcohol off the table, and now we're arguing can it be parked there overnight? I was, I was originally a no, but I'm seriously reconsidering now.
But if that's the case, Randy.
Yes.
Then, then five other teams from Mitchell or Brookings or whatever could do the same thing.
I agree, but they, but they could do that now, well.
If they can get in and find the spot in the morning.
Right, right. No, I, I get that, and I know parking is an issue, I, I get all of that, I've been down there hundreds of times. Um, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to deny the request. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Roll call.
Yep, Fish.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lawrence.
Aye.
Marso.
No.
Steen.
No.
Forward to two.
Motion carries.
So I guess one alternative would be, um, the first one will be by the wayside, but that second one, he certainly could bring that forward to park board, and, you know, if park board is okay with it, then it he certainly could bring that forward to park board and, you know, if park board is okay with it, then it, it could be, you know, a recommendation to council. He would have time for that if he chose to do that. No, just to park it overnight. Yeah. He said he took the alcohol off the table, so...
All right, we'll move on with, uh, public safety.
Thank you.
Have a pet or sprint, uh, request, uh, to operate in McCarty Park.
Typical, typical request, um, I think we've got two of them here. One's from La Sabarosita LLC for selling merchandise in McCarty Park. Food vendor for soccer tournament.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the request. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion carries. The second, uh, request. Sabaros five oh two LLC, same thing?
Yep.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second to approve. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? That motion carries. Um, nothing under administration? We'll move to, uh, streets. We've got the work report on page thirty-two. How's things going, Tammy, with the, uh, core area?
Uh, core area's moving along. They are doing the concrete work right now. Um, utilities will be completed here pretty soon. So the utility contractor will probably leave the site for a while, um, while they shape the street and get it paved for those first two phases.
Okay. When do they anticipate starting on the next phase?
Probably mid-July.
Okay.
It's really weather dependent and we've had a lot of rain this year, so...
Yeah, we certainly have. Okay, the, uh, item number two is the concrete repair project bids on page thirty-three and thirty-six.
This is, uh, bid out on May twenty-third. We only received one bid from Big L's Concrete for sixty-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. Um, we did send it out to a few different concrete companies. I think it's kind of in that range where it's too small of a project, but it's big enough to where we need to bid it, so they still need to do the bid bond and that sort of thing. So it kind of rules out all the small contractors. Um, it is within budget. We're using our sidewalk budget and then a little bit of the shared use pass budget to complete it.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion and second to approve the concrete repair project, uh, bids. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion carries. Water and sewer. Uh, we have the, uh, conservation committee members. I'd like to appoint. Who were they again?
Tom Wilford, Joe Hausman, and Austin Clays.
Correct. Tom, Joe, and Austin.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion carries. Drainage area maintenance bids.
This is the same project that we bid out last year. Um, we did only receive one bid on it. It's the same contractor as last year, Split Rock Landscaping. Um, it's the same eleven sites and the exact same cost. So we would spend up to that two hundred thousand, that's in the budget.
So Tammy, if we didn't do this, what's, what's the ramifications?
That they go back to pretty much being non-maintained and they're kind of a mess before, so we've kind of put a lot of money into them to get them to a place where they're maintainable. I will say that Parks Department is going to do the majority of the mowing part of it this year as they have time, but we still added it into the bid just in case they get really busy and can't do it. Then we kind of have these guys on call to just come and get it done.
So, I mean, it's just a matter, we don't have the staff to do all of this, and if we don't maintain these ways, we're gonna have a problem somewhere along the way, right?
Yeah, if you restrict the water in the drainage ways, we do have a liability there if it does cause damage to someone else's property that's adjacent to it.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I do approve. Second.
Motion and second to approve the drainage area maintenance bids. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion carries. Sioux Falls Forest Main. Where we at on that?
So this is a Sioux Falls project. They call it the Two Forty Project and it's their main sewer to their headworks building. Um, they added in our portion of that since our sewer mains run in that same alignment. So Sioux Falls pretty much put the plans together. If you remember, we did our own design set with HDR and just added it into their bid. So their low bidder was like, oh, contracting.
Okay.
And, and they're gonna do the supervision on it, so to speak?
Yeah, I think we are gonna have to have a little bit of our own construction admin on it, just to do pay apps and that sort of thing. But for the most part, they're doing the inspection since everything's in the same trench.
So, I mean, that's really a good use of cooperative effort, I think, so...
It is, yep.
I'll look for motion.
So moved.
Motion and second to approve. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? That motion carries. Uh, do we move right into the CIP? Okay, we're there. Excuse me? Okay, is anything much changed since the last we met?
So just what I've changed is really add the financials in here. Um, we did get an updated cost on Ironwood and the Cool Lift Station. Fifty-seven. So otherwise, nothing's really changed. I hadn't really heard any different on the priorities on there, so that's what I came up with the financials. I did print them off too, too. I actually had an error on the second one, so last week was not a lot of financial stuff. I was a little busy. Someone was out. Um, there is a couple different projections and I'll explain those, but the first one is sales tax, the, the difference is sales tax. Um, the first one is sales tax off budget. So, um, this year's budget, sales tax, we're budgeting four point eight million. And then I do three percent a year, um, for projections. As you know, sales tax has been higher. Um, last year it was five point three million. And then this year, we're staying pretty flat, so I'd guess we'd probably be around that five point three million again this year. So the second one is bumping up that sales tax, um, to five point three million now that I put in five point three million for twenty twenty-five. So it could vary. But I kind of wanted to show just a couple differences of what the difference of sales tax can do. Um, so at the top, we have, and this is general fund only because general fund is the one that is, um, supporting a lot of the general fund projects or the projects that we have going on, such as Public Works Building, City Hall, Ironwood, and Rushmore. The utility funds, water and sewer fund themselves. Um, if we have a project there, then we have to offset it with rates and those things. So this would be general fund only. So I have the revenue at the top and then operating expenses. So it's just operating, um, no capital projects, no equipment, and no improvements in that expenditure line. So that will, what I'm projecting to operate the city. So between revenue and operating expenses, and I have that orange line, that's the difference. And then below that, I have planned equipment. Um, we still, still need equipment, we still need to upper date our equipment, so I have that first. And then I have what's left for capital improvements. And then I have in twenty twenty-five, um, we have the design of City Hall in there and then Park CIP of five hundred thousand. And then that bottom line is what's kind of left for other projects. Usually there's some other small, small projects that we'll have during budget time. So as you can see, um, with the first projection at sales tax, just running around that four nine in twenty twenty-nine, we're looking like we're in the negative. But even if you bump up sales tax to the five point three million, you're, um, in twenty twenty-nine, the difference is not negative, but when you add a little bit of equipment, you get a little bit of negative. Um, so I don't, I mean, that's five years out. I don't see any concerns in that number. So we have, what we're adding in there is the City Hall debt and the Public Works Building. Those are twenty-year, but I'm figuring those at twenty years at four and a half percent. That's kind of what we're seeing right now. And then the Rushmore project, we've been doing those at fifteen years, and I have that projected at four and a half percent. So those are the bond, the additional bond payments I have in there.
When are we thinking we would start back on the core then? Like after twenty twenty-nine? Do we have a plan?
Not really beyond, I mean, I project five years out. I don't really, we, you know, 'cause we look at this every year, so it'd just be, hopefully after that, we could get started back on it again.
Yeah, it's a small number, but the twenty-five thousand for police camera system, you don't have anything for twenty-seven and beyond. Is there a change there?
I believe they planned on doing it, starting it up this year and then adding more cameras the next two years.
Is this just the...
Yeah, this is... Yeah, fifty in the budget this year. Yeah, it's citywide.
Okay, so it's just buildings and things like that? Buildings and traffic lights, et cetera. A little more added security that we can monitor on a regular basis.
How are we feeling about the potential loss of, um, the grocery tax? How do we put that into here?
I don't feel real good about it, let's put it that way. Um, you know, our, our hope is that a couple of things could take place. If that referendum is approved this fall, it wouldn't go into effect until July of twenty-six. So there's two legislative sessions in between, and hopefully the, the legislature would do a couple of things. One, either figure out a mechanism that would allow the state to, to continue to collect the sales tax for us, um, which is a constitutional issue. Two, um, we could possibly figure out a way to do it in-house. Or, you know, if the state would come up with a mechanism to replace that funding, which I think that's probably the least probable of the three. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's four hundred thousand dollars, so roughly, give or take. So, you know, at this point in time, Christina's got the two projections, actual versus budget. You know, historically, we've been very conservative with sales tax revenue forecasts. I'm not sure that now would be the time to get super aggressive and, and go up to the five-three, 'cause if we lose that, that grocery tax, we'd be down at four nine. So, you know, I think we should base whatever we do off of the budgeted numbers. And then if, if there's additional sales tax, we can look at additional projects. But hopefully the legislature can figure something out over the next two sessions if that referendum passes.
Oh, the, the concept of, um, you know, us collecting it ourselves, I'm sure that there's a, you know, computer program that could do that, but everybody in the state would have to do that. Otherwise, I mean, there's gonna be hell to pay. If you live in Brandon, you buy groceries here and you have to pay sales tax, but you don't in Garrett Center, wherever. I mean, so it's not even, I don't even think that's feasible.
It's like building materials. Uh, if you buy it at Menards, it gets delivered here, we would collect the sales tax. So those systems are in place currently that the state utilizes. So it's not like they'd be reinventing the wheel. However, uh, I think it would be extremely difficult to get cooperation from, you know, what, what are we gonna do to Menards if they don't pay the sales tax to Brandon? There'd be a whole enforcement issue as well.
It's just food, so...
Well, they have food at Menards. So, yeah, it, it's, it's, uh, it's, it would be a definite impact to the entire state municipalities. I think Sioux Falls was fifteen million, sixteen million, and lost revenue.
Well, of course, you've all heard me say this before, but, um, so if we look at the front page on the four point nine, we've got money in the park system for twenty-five and twenty-six, nothing beyond that. That's always the easy place to cut. So just so we're all aware that, um, we don't have anything in there for parks beyond that.
Uh, nothing right at the moment, you know, unless you've got any questions or you look at us like, uh, what are you thinking, you guys are crazy? Um, we want some changes. Otherwise, uh, the plan would be to...
The other, yeah, the other thing I should mention is the fund balance projection, because, um, I put in there the beginning fund balance that I had at five one, basically. Um, Big Sioux Drainage will still come out of that. We do have the bid in for that, so it's pretty close. Exit four oh six, um, we haven't paid for that yet. That's coming out of fund balance. And then we probably put about two million towards City Hall for FFNE and just to draw down that debt. And then the other discussion item would be Ironwood. Um, I did not, there's, there's different ways you can do it. So we can bond for it. I did not put that in the projections, or we could use fund balance to pay for the project. That doesn't mean we would not do special assessments. We would still do the special assessment process. We just would not borrow for the project to, um, to pay for the, the project.
So to get, so to get to the six hundred and fifty thousand, um, bond payment for the City Hall, we need to put that two million down, that's included in there?
Right. I mean, we do have a healthy fund balance. Um, we've talked about that for a while. There's been a couple of projects that are kind of in lagging and just haven't drawn it down, so we'll get those done this year. But there are other things that we can use it for and that, those are a couple of my suggestions, um, to draw it down.
And that'd still leave us between that thirty and fifty percent?
Yeah.
Fund balance.
It would still leave us healthy, I think I, yeah, it was around forty-five percent, roughly.
We won't get too nervous.
No.
So next steps, if everybody's comfortable with that, we'll put it on the next council agenda. We'll have a resolution approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine CIP. Um, probably same language in the adopting resolution that we've had before, where if additional funds come in to prioritize at the park or golf course. I can't remember.
Yeah, so we don't really have anything in here for the golf course that I can see, so are we assuming that there's gonna be enough inside the enterprise fund to cover their major projects? That's the plan?
Depends on what the major projects are. Obviously, the, the parking lot is rather expensive. We're anticipating receipt of the FEMA check this year for seven hundred and some thousand. And at least at this point in time, the recommendation from staff is to maintain that in the golf department fund instead of moving it to the, the general fund. And then it could cover some of those anticipated public or, or capital improvements equipment that we know are coming down the pipe.
So what if we, um, do the design of the City Hall and then, you know, we lose the four hundred thousand? And, I don't know, we have a recession or something, our numbers drop off dramatically. Can that, is it feasible to just let that design sit there? Can you just let it sit?
Yeah, once the design's done, it's done. And, and, you know, unless somebody comes along and says, hey, I, I think the administrator needs bigger office, uh, we wouldn't go back and take a look at the design. If and when the cash flow is there that we would proceed with the project, we'd just bid it out as that design. So once the design's done, it's done. Yep.
But for the design to be done, we need to have a location.
Correct. And at this point in time, the design would, it, it would fit anywhere, but it's primarily focused here at this site.
So basically, we're looking at the same projects that we looked at the last time without any big change. It looks like we can fund them?
Yep.
Tell me this, I have, what question I have is that, once we get into things like, uh, Aspen Park, if, if we decide to do more, is that a possibility? If we decide to fund more, like, some parking space, that sort of thing?
It is, that's why we do this every year instead of every three or four years.
Okay.
The financial condition changes if, uh, heaven forbid Barb is correct and, and the referendum passes and a recession smacks us. The financial condition changes. If, heaven forbid, Barb is correct and the referendum passes and a recession smacks us, we would certainly need to take a look.
And the sky falls.
Yeah, and back off. If, you know, sales tax continues to grow at fifteen percent, we can start looking at adding projects. That's why we do it every year now. We'll base the twenty twenty-five budget off of this CIP. And, you know, just as a reminder, for our capital projects, it's really a three-year project. Year one, we design. Year two, we build it, and then year three, we make sure that it's up to warranty and everything's, the grass is growing. So if we base the twenty twenty-five budget off this CIP, it's kind of tough to come back in the middle of twenty-five and say, hey, let's add a project. We'd have to wait till twenty-six to do that.
I think one difference I see on here, and I'm not opposed to it at all, is that we've actually got the Public Works Building in. We've been talking about that for a long time, Raleigh, I know. But we actually have it categorized in here, and I'm happy to see that, so. I don't like that payment.
And I think it works well. We just don't want to do two buildings at once. So we would start with one, we're a little further along with City Hall, get that one built, and then we can start with the other one.
And along Barb, same question. So design of buildings is both buildings. That five hundred thousand is both buildings? That's just City Hall? Okay.
Design City Hall in twenty-five.
Oh, I see, and then twenty-seven, there's another five hundred thousand. Okay, I see.
Okay, any other questions?
So tell me if, if we approve, being the newbie, what are we approving? Before we make a motion and do anything?
We really aren't approving anything tonight.
We're not doing anything tonight.
We're not doing anything tonight.
Not, no.
This is just the plan. What'll transpire is on page fifty-seven, that will be attached to the resolution. And you're just laying out the planned projects for the next five years. Really, the only one that it's going to primarily affect is the twenty twenty-five budget, because that's the one that we're gonna base off of this plan. So next year, about the same time, we'll be sitting through these meetings again, saying, hey, revenues are up, revenues are down, revenues are flat. Here's some additional projects, and, you know, just to keep you thinking about that, on page sixty-one, are some other projects that, you know, we're gonna have to be taking a look at probably next year. We'll get some concrete estimates on some of these. So it's not just a one and done, and then we forget about it till twenty-eight.
But it's just our guide.
It is.
Our, it's our priority list, and if something, sorry, Harry, but I have to be always the negative now. You know, something happens, we're not, like, we have to do these. We're not committed.
You know, heaven forbid a tornado comes through, oh my God, and destroys the public workshop. Well, guess what? That's gonna get moved up on the list.
Once you approve the CI plan, CIP plan, the one that would probably get rolling on right away would be Ironwood, and we would start on that special assessment process. So, you know, as that comes forward, you, you know, you'll have approvals on that. Otherwise, like Rushmore, you would have a design agreement come forward to you late this year or early next year, and they would start on that design, you know, next year. So you'll have the design agreements come forward to you.
There's a couple of general comments. First of all, I think your people, I think people that work in a place deserve a place to work effectively. And I think that a place that you work makes a difference in how you work. I believe that. My career was spent at Brannan Valley School District, and facilities were a primary focus. And when facilities are upgraded, I saw an increase in performance, in teachers, in coaches, in athletes, in all of those things. On the other hand, being on the Parks Board, representative to this, and seeing nothing, and I know it's not permanent, but seeing nothing in two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I go, okay, you know? And again, from my previous employment, a lot of times, co-curriculars were where you cut some things. So I'm feeling like I got on one place and got out of that, and now we're doing it. And I don't take this personally. I don't believe that. But that, but that is, it has to be a concern of mine. And I have to take that back to the Park Board and say that that has to be a little bit of a concern of mine. But, but as far as facilities and those kinds of things, I absolutely believe that the facilities that your people work in affects how they do their job and how people perceive them doing their job.
Randy, I agree. You know, Aspen Park needs a lot of work. I mean, I think we're in great shape with most of our parks, in my opinion. Our neighborhood parks are terrific. I went by one the other day, and there was a bunch of kids out there playing. I mean, I think the neighborhood parks are great. But Aspen Park needs a lot of work, needs a lot of help. We took a little tour not too long ago, after our last meeting, and there's a lot to be done there.
Well, that's part of
Time to get started on it.
Yeah, that's part of what I'm talking. We did that tour, and we know that our Parks Manager says this is what I'd like to do this year, this year, this year, this year, and he has kind of a plan laid out. And I don't know if we can do that with what I see on paper here. So that's, that's my concern, and I know that this isn't everything, and if hopefully, sales tax projections or actuals come in way above this, and then that's a moot point.
We can also add things next year.
Right, no, and I understand that, yes.
All right, anything else? No need for an executive session?
Well, since the attorney's not here, I think we should have one.
Um, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.